...of allegiance.
(inaudible) ...to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Monday, June 3rd meeting of the Board of Aldermen. Our first order of business is minutes of the previous meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from June 20th?
So moved. Second.
Are there any additions or deletions? Alderman Gillum.
I would like to put an addition in. There was a comment on the public, on the public comment area that Alderman Gillum called a point of order and that should have been in the minutes stating that the public meetings on August 18th and 25th, excuse me, July 18th and 25th and August 14th were properly warned, which that should be in the minutes. Anytime you call a point of order, that should be in the minutes. I can give you the whole language, Susan. I can give you a whole language that should be in there.
Okay.
And then there should be another one, another one that should be in there. Under special event permits, I made a comment that I had a conflict, but we were still going to vote, but I want to make sure the board knew that I belonged to those two groups. That should also be in the minutes, too.
Very good.
That was the special permit for the Crowley Road Race and the Memorial Day Ceremony at West Street.
And the maker of the motion to approve and seconder are okay with these changes?
Yes.
Any additional changes or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Moving on to public comment, are there members of the public who would wish to address the board on matters not on our agenda this evening? Step right up and just state your name and town of residence for our minutes.
My name is Beth, yeah, Beth Barra, and I live in Rutland City. And I'm here to talk about my, one of my favorite subjects, Marble Valley Transit. I don't know how many of you walk through the transit center, the, not the lobby, not the inside lobby, but outside. It's, it's a mess. There's a lot of pigeon poop and cigarette butts. And I was, I was surprised. Today, I took the bus and there was a young woman who was sweeping up the cigarette butts. So my first suggestion, I don't know how much money Marble Valley has, but there's a machine, and I used to see it, oh, probably like 10 years ago, it was a sweeper, a street sweeper, and that would make more sense than this woman having to sweep up cigarette butts because it's an ongoing problem. The second thing is the pigeon poop. I, I am willing, some Sunday, when there are very few buses around, I am willing if either Marble Valley or the city provides hose detergent, and hopefully there's somebody out there who would like to volunteer along with me to scrub, to scrub that up. Oh, and the third thing is, I know quite a few years ago, well, not that long ago, really, they were putting out poison for the pigeons in, on the roof underneath the, underneath the parking deck. And I know there are a lot of bird lovers out there, but that is real, it's really unsanitary. So anyways, that's all I have to say. If anybody wants to get in touch with me, I'll give my phone number to one of the Alder people and they can ferry phone calls. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you for your willingness to help. Alderman Gillum.
Just to clarify, the Marble Valley does not rent the parking garage, so you just go in and out. It's a company that runs the parking deck. They're supposed to be maintaining that, and I would be more happy to send that to committee because I agree with you that when I was there decorating the units for the parade because it was raining, we went under the deck to decorate, and I noticed how dirty it was. And I said, I'm glad you brought that to our attention. That should be referred to committee on the parking committee. I believe the deck is under the parking committee, and I would like to move that subject to the parking committee.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to refer maintenance issues at the parking deck to the parking committee. It's been seconded. Any discussion or debate on the referral? Did you want to add something additional?
I was under the impression, Will, that Marble Valley took care of where the buses come in and RAS took care of the rest.
We just take care of the little offices, that's all we take care of.
Oh, that's all? Oh, okay.
Public space with the offices, that's what I think we're actually involved in. Everything else is under RAS, need to stay.
There's no debate or discussion on the referral? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and I'll make sure that you're noticed about the meeting so that you can attend. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the board on matters not on our agenda tonight?
Sure.
Thank you. Step right up.
I'm Pam Perizzo. I've been before this board before. I am a business owner on Woodstock Avenue. I have been there, either working or owning a business there for almost 32 years. I am in favor of the road diet. I am hoping that it will slow traffic down. I know there's been a lot of stuff on Facebook, et cetera, and other people here. I just wanted to again say to you, I am very for that and for the safety of Woodstock Avenue.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there other members of the public who wish to address the board on matters not on our agenda tonight? Step right up.
I'm Don Perizzo. Pam's my wife. Along with her, we've both been going up back and forth on Woodstock Avenue for 30 years. We have Perizzo Champlain Valley Eye Care, which used to be located where 802 Nutrition is. So I'm very familiar. Our bank used to be Peoples or Chittenden up the street. So I've spent a lot of time on that intersection crossing, going to the bank. The last 17 years, we've been on 69 Woodstock Avenue, which is diagonal. I don't, I'm not trying to convince anybody, I'm definitely a fan for this because if people have heard before, I'm a survivor of a left-hand accident that occurred. I was run over, hit by a guy driving a truck with a snowplow on it coming off of Deer Street. The sun supposedly got in his eyes while I was, east and west traffic was stopped on Woodstock Avenue. So after that happened, I've had full rotator cuff surgery, nerve damage, I had a pulmonary embolism because of this. So if I'm biased towards this safety issue, I hope you understand why. But also being on our end, I don't know what is up towards McDonald's, but I'm on the end where I watch people heading west to stop before they get to Deer Street. They see that light turn yellow and they hammer it so they can beat that light just to go through the red light there so they can hopefully get the green light at Lafayette. I've been watching the last three weeks, and there's construction going on, and the different construction dump trucks that are driving through there. One in particular, which I'd be willing to talk to law enforcement if they want to know, I've seen him twice do it. He gets there and he pounds on it. So it's not safe. I really want to know from the people who think this four-lane thing is so awesome, how are you going to make it safer? Why is it safer for people to, the supposed speed limit is 35 miles an hour. It's not 50, 60 miles an hour. It isn't supposed to be getting at Lafayette Street racing to get up to McDonald's. It's not safe. It hasn't been safe. I stressed before, the shoulder is about as wide as this rail. I watched a mom today with three kids try to get them to get on the other side of her to her right so she could walk up past the car wash. Not a day like today, it's okay, but walk that when it's raining. Wait till when it's snow, and then the guy plows out his car wash and leaves the sidewalk all covered up, and there's ice flowing down the driveway, so people have to walk out into that road. There's no shoulder. So it is, it's safety. So nobody has yet, with this four lane, you guys are so worried, what makes it safer? What are you so worried about? Why do you, you think people are going to buzz by your business, is going to get them to stop in? When we did this 10 years ago, it worked. I know everybody said it didn't. It worked on my end because it was easier for us to take a left-hand turn into our building. And when I wanted to come out and take a left-hand turn, if people had the courtesy to let you out, you can get into that center lane and then go up and then merge. And I, we had, this past summer, we had one of our patients who was coming in to take the left into our building, and the Casella garbage truck noticed the light was changing and stopped. He looked and motioned the gentleman to come in, and as the gentleman came across, the lane was clear, but the truck behind the garbage truck decided to pull out and T-boned him, totaled his vehicle. He was a 77-year-old man that couldn't reach his family. So after hours, I finally had to bring him home 45 minutes later. So that's because people want to race. It's not just the young or the old. I see people on their cell phones, I see them texting and they're driving. It's, so you, if you can figure out how to make that safe with four lanes, then maybe you could convince me. But you can't right now because it did work, and I want to thank the people who took the courage to vote for this again to happen. I'm not trying to make enemies or friends. I come here because I don't like the confrontation, but it's, I keep, I'm not somebody, I don't have a Facebook account, so that may be odd for people, but I understand the big campaign, just like 10 years ago, signs up in Facebook and hurrah, we're going to stop this, and why? Just explain to me, how is it safer? And ask yourself, do you really want people driving that fast by your business, your place where you want them to come and visit? So I'm sorry to take up that much time, but I am definitely a fan of making it safer. Not trying to make it difficult for anybody, but it's not safe and it hasn't been safe. And if anything, when you guys turned it back to a four lane 10 years ago, it just showed where it is today. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board on items not on our agenda?
Good evening. My name is Chris Whiteawake. I'm a resident of Edgerton Street in Rutland City and also a property owner on Woodstock Avenue and a business owner. I operate my business out of that same property. And I've had the, I've been kind of fortunate. We had our business in downtown for about a little over 15 years, just bottom of West Street Hill, so we got to really experience what downtown was like. And we liked it, but we needed bigger space, and we wanted the same kind of amenities that we had with the building that we had. It had parking in the back and it had easy access for our customers, good visibility. At the time, there was no Heritage Credit Union building there, it was just an open field. And so we were able to purchase a property and we moved to Woodstock Avenue. And so we're at 110, and we have that same big open space before our building. We have parking, so it gives us great access and a lot more room for us for our retail. So we've had the luxury of being at that location now for a little over 15 years as well, so we've been in business for 31. And things are great, but we do see the difference, and I can compare to what we saw downtown in accessibility and visibility for customers as opposed to what we see on Woodstock Avenue. When we bought the Woodstock Avenue property, we were, you know, encouraged by the number of, the amount of traffic that's on that road. But honestly, a lot of that traffic is just repeat traffic. It's people going to and from, whether it be the dump or, you know, other facilities, it's back and forth, which is good, but for us, what happens is the speed. And that's my biggest problem with Woodstock Avenue right now. It's not enforced. We see really high speeds. This morning, I have a little radar device that I use, and I stand out by my sign when I put my flag out in the morning, and I check speeds going by. And I had a gentleman, I don't even know if it was a gentleman, couldn't tell, but a vehicle, white Ford Explorer, didn't get the plate because it was going so fast, but clocked him at 51 miles an hour. And my, that device, the way that I understand radar to work, that's only accurate if you're straight onto them. If you're off angle at any, in any way, shape, or form, 10 degrees or more, there's what's called the cosine effect. I read this on the internet, I'm not a whiz. And apparently with that, that speed that it, the device is recording would actually be less than what the vehicle is doing. So if it recorded 51 at an angle, I can only assume it was doing faster. And when he hit the yellow light at Deer, he kept going. And it was red when he got to Lafayette, and he blew it. And that's an intersection where, for years, I've come out because I live in that neighborhood. I live in the neighborhoods off of Lafayette Street, grew up there, live there now, and I come out of that Lafayette intersection, pull left onto Woodstock Avenue to head to Main Street, and I, I've had it happen where I hesitate because cars blow that red light. So I was, that was a little jarring this morning to watch, but that's, that's what we see a lot. And those speeds, I think, as a business, really affect us. They affect visibility, they affect access to us, too, because people, as they drive down that road, they're really focused on the road, driving it and staying safe. Because there's no, you don't find a road like Woodstock Avenue in many, or anywhere that I can find. Where it's two lanes opposing and sandwiched between a sidewalk and curbing, you know, most roads are going to have a shoulder that gives you a space to move into, to, to avoid any sort of collision, or there'll be a median. But this road has neither, and most either have one or both. So it's just an odd road in terms of safety. And, and so for us as a business, though, in that stretch of Woodstock Avenue, we, we wanted to move there because we saw a lot of opportunities. We see it as a place that there's a lot of independently owned businesses that own the property like we do, like the Perizzos do. So, you know, they're all, we're, we're part of that grand list, you know, the grand list that we all talk about and wanting to build. That's an area for that kind of development. I mean, there's more that can be done on Woodstock Avenue. I think giving those businesses a leg up rather than hindering us, which is what happened 10 years ago. I mean, honestly, you know, as we looked at what happened 10 years ago with a two-week trial, which was basically a joke, I mean, and then, and then the vault that went down, honestly, didn't seem like leadership to me. It was basically caving to the public opinion and not listening to the experts. The people that study this every day, the people that, you know, study traffic, develop roads, that information from them was ignored and to the detriment of businesses like mine. I held back on doing any sort of, you know, growth with that property. I have a lot of open space that I could, you know, build and develop into, but I held off. You know, I'm not interested in if, if we're going to see this type of, you know, direction in Rutland, I, I'm just going to, I'm going to just hold tight. But, so I was happy this time around that we actually had, you know, people that were interested in reading the data, understanding the data, and taking that leadership role. So I would just recommend that the folks in this room that are helping to make decisions understand the value that Woodstock Avenue brings to the city and what we need to be able to continue to provide with our taxes and how we can help grow the grand list. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Step right up.
My name is Andy Olenoff. I live on Hillside Road. That's between McDonald's and the Pizza Hut. So from where I live, I am coming out or going back to my house via Woodstock Ave several times every day, and I am knowledgeable enough so to be very careful entering Woodstock Ave or turning onto my road from Woodstock Ave, especially when there is a lot of traffic or even when there isn't a lot. I've got to be careful about people who drive in the middle lane when there's hardly any traffic, they ought to be in the outside lane. So I am looking forward to the diet road program being implemented and feeling a lot safer on Woodstock Ave than I do now.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the board? Yep.
Set this to taller. My name's Larry Walter. I live at 14 Belmont Avenue, up in the sleepy part of town there. I've been there since 97. I've been, since I got here, I've been either walking or riding my bike, either to work or just since I retired about 10 years ago, just anywhere downtown. You may have seen me carrying a white bucket with a trash picker sometimes. It's one of my favorite things. I just went to Ogunquit, Maine. Anybody ever been to Ogunquit here?
Yeah.
Pretty nice. It's a nice place. Has anybody been north of Ogunquit, just a little ways up into Wells?
Yeah.
On Route 1? Do you know what kind of lane configuration there is there for miles going north?
Two lanes.
It's a road diet. It's the exact replica of what we're proposing here. That goes from a population of 15,000 in the off-season to 30,000 people living in that area, you know, in motels or whatever, and it's packed with businesses up there. When I was there, I thought, well, I'll call the Chamber of Commerce, and I talked to a very nice woman. Her name was Eleanor Vadenain, V-A-D-E-N-A-I-N. She's the president and CEO of Wells Chamber of Commerce. I would think she'd be somewhat familiar with whether businesses have a problem with this sort of traffic configuration. And she said she had zero, zero complaints about the configuration since it went in, over all the years it's been there. And I said, can I quote you? She said, yes, this thing has been a godsend, it's been wonderful. I've got her name right here. I would say, for any of you people who think that, you know, dogs are going to be living with cats, or it's going to be mass hysteria, or anything like that, to quote from, you know, one of my favorite movies, it ain't going to happen, you know? And I, I hope people realize this is about safety, but it's also about business. It's about being able to see these businesses at 35 miles an hour instead of 51 to 55. I mean, these are spikes, obviously, but I'd say the average is about 42. Would anybody disagree with that? Okay. So, and what happens is when you're, if you want to read a book about traffic design, everybody's cone of vision narrows. And so you're not going to see things, the faster you go, the more you concentrate on straight ahead because you have to. You have to see things coming at you at a, you know, faster pace. And so you're not going to see Chris Whiteawake's business, or the Perizzos, or any of these other places, they're just going to be a blur, you're not going to see them. So I highly recommend you talk to either this woman here, if you really want an idea of how well this works, or if you're afraid of emergency vehicles, to talk to either the South Burlington Police, or Fire Chief, or the Burlington Fire Chief. rave reviews from both of these guys, too. This works. It's safer and it's easier for them to get to emergency situations when you have that center lane, and it's way safer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name's Lopee LaRoe. I'm a local resident. I'm here in favor of bike-friendly streets, and I have lived on both coasts of the United States. I've lived in the Bay Area, and I lived in New York City for way too long. I'm going to say that I felt a lot safer biking extensively everywhere, all over New York City for 20 years than I do in Rutland. And I, and I commend the mayor, I commend whoever has made this awesome choice to, it's called a road diet, that's pretty funny to me because it's good for people to get out on bikes and, and exercise. It's a healthy, healthy road diet, I think. You know, bicyclists know this, like biking creates like a communal feel, like camaraderie. When, when you ride by someone on a bike, you kind of nod, you check out each other's bikes. There's like, there's like a unspoken sort of bike, like etiquette that is really enjoyable. And I am very happy that Rutland has the foresight to want to create a bike-friendly Woodstock Ave. And I've been here the last few meetings and just listened to people go on and on and on complaining and, and being afraid of change. You know, change is hard, but like, and it can be scary, but you know, I would just encourage people to give it a try and, and, you know, give it a chance. And also, like, I agree, like, people drive way too fast on Woodstock. I, and a lot of those people that came and complained about it were saying, they never see any bicyclists riding up there. And I'm like, yeah, because it's too dangerous. Like, if it was safe, I, I never ride up Woodstock. I ride everywhere, but I don't go up Woodstock. It's like, it's sketchy, and I'm a New York City bicyclist. I've ridden Williamsburg Bridge, Brooklyn Bridge, every bridge, all over the place. You know, New York City is pretty bike-friendly, there's a lot of bike lanes and stuff, so, you know, it may sound crazy, but I did feel safer in New York. And don't judge me for, I'm not, I'm not an outlander or whatever. I, I grew up in upstate New York in the rural town, so, anyway, just as an aside. Yeah, so I'm, I'm totally in favor. I think it's a wonderful thing, and I look forward to seeing how it transforms people's daily habits, like, maybe people will get on a bike. Maybe we could do other programs where we encourage people, like, like group bike rides or different things that are really fun. You know, we used to do that in San Francisco, we used to do that in New York City, too, in Brooklyn, ride, ride together as a group, and it's just super fun. You know, you can have one person have music on their bike, and, I don't know, just encourage people to think positively about change and to go for it, and maybe get a bike, and if you have one, tune it up and get out there on your bike. Wear a helmet, encourage people to ride bikes. Thanks for listening.
Mr. Brenner?
Hi. My name is Chris Barnett. I'm a resident of Rutland City on Oak Street. I would just like to add a couple more comments on the road diet and a couple statistics on safety. Just to point out on the speed note, at about 35 miles an hour, the chance of a pedestrian fatality is about 25 percent, whereas above 50 miles per hour, it is above 75 percent. So pedestrian fatalities sharply increase with speed. Number two, in the current four-lane configuration, there are eight conflict points at any given intersection. That means just about every move from left turns off of Woodstock, left turns on to Woodstock, merging lanes, getting in or out of the right lane, all of them are conflict points where accidents could happen. And as others already mentioned, there is no curb, no shoulder, very little room for air on that road. On the biking note and on traffic note, about 60 percent of all trips in the U.S. are under five miles in length, and a lot of traffic that we see on weekdays in the morning and the afternoons are school rush, parents taking kids to school. I think if we encourage more biking in Rutland, we could have more kids going to school on bike, and that would help reduce traffic, reduce accidents, and create much safer environments to bike and walk around town.
Thank you. Are there other, other members of the public who wish to address the board?
I'm Dave Koppick. I live in Rutland City, and I just want to point out kind of the obvious. If you go up North Main Street, you have, through Rutland City, you have four-lane configuration. You get to Rutland Town, it goes down to one lane north. You going east on Woodstock Avenue, four lanes through Rutland City, you get just the other side of the town line or the city line, and it gets, goes down right past Home Depot, it's down to one lane. So you, you don't, you don't get to carry all this speed that you have, and you think you're, you're making all this great time through the city, whether you're on North Main or Woodstock Avenue, out of the city in those directions. When... When Mendon is currently in the process now of doing an audit on, they're making, they're going to be making some sort of a proposal on a road diet through Route 4 from Rutland City to Killington. And because they're really concerned, it's a terribly dangerous road. We all know that. Route 4 up that way is terribly dangerous. The speeds are too fast. They want to, they want to do some sort of traffic calming, and it's going to consist of a combination of things. And, you know, they, they want to make the road more amenable for the residents, but also for the businesses, and to make it safer. And so that, there's some, some proof that locally, you know, some people have the right idea. And also, it will slow traffic down, again, taking away the advantage of bombing through Rutland City. So just to, to end up here, I just want to say that maybe the road diet is not the best description, that maybe it would be better to describe it as a road buffet, because rather than being something restrictive and negative, it's really something that's positive because it offers something for those users of every mode of transportation. So I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak?
Hi. Leonard Barton Stein, Rutland City resident. I'll be brief, but I also would like to speak in support of the road diet, just to say that in addition to everything else that all the other supporters of this project have been saying, it's also a great way in order to help people be pedestrians in the city. One of the most difficult things, moving about the city when you aren't in a car, is getting from one quadrant of the city to the next just due to the traffic on the roads and the lack of crosswalks going across them. I know quite a few people who do not drive, or who might like the option not to drive to get around the city, and by providing greater visibility and slower speeds, it makes it just much more accessible to people, whether they want to or cannot drive, to get around Rutland City, and may potentially attract a younger group of people to the city in general. People like blockable spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to communications from the mayor.
Good evening. Much like last Capitol meeting, I took some notes from tonight's feedback. And I'll say, between last meeting and this meeting, the, the theme of safety is pretty much the loudest thing that we've heard, right? Everybody wants Woodstock Ave, which seems to get the most attention, but also North Main Street to be a safer space. And, and with that, I'll kind of leave it at that, as saying, you know, that's where the decision has been made, that's the process, and hopefully as we continue through that, we'll see the results of that when the reconfiguration is complete. So I broke things up a little bit differently this week. I just want to kind of talk about all the outreach that's been going on. The past few weeks has been very busy with that piece of the puzzle. Today, we had Mondays with Mike, had a great conversation with a resident who just moved back to the area after a long time. They're interested in investing in housing here, building relationships, helping with some of the homeless transition pieces, and they're looking into even the VHIP 2.0 and the Rehab Revolving Loan Fund, so that was a great conversation. Also, the, in the past two weeks, the Boys and Girls Club Teen Center opened up with their grand opening. The walkthrough was great. If you didn't get to go take a tour, I'm sure they'd be happy to do that. Make sure you stop by. The Dismas House Dinner, the VFW Memorial Day Ceremony, Startup Rutland Tech Meetup, Northeast Primary School, I was out there, over there, and did an assembly with them for their kindergarten through second graders. It's been a very busy couple of weeks in Rutland, and I really want to kind of put a thank you out to all those people who are putting together these different opportunities for people to come, get together, spend time, you know? I remember being a kid and hearing there's nothing to do in Rutland. I can tell you, over the last two weeks, there's been plenty to do in Rutland. Bill Gillum's at almost every single one of those things I go to. I did want to talk about just general outreach about Rutland. I've had the opportunity to be on the radio a lot lately. I've spent a couple different, over the past two months, gone up to WVMT, which is a radio station up in Chittenden County. Spent, you know, hour, hour and a half on the program there, talking about Rutland, advocating for what we do down here, the affordability that we have compared to Chittenden County with our housing and all the things that we have going on. But I've also been able to speak locally on both WJJR and WSYB in the mornings with Brian Collmore on occasion and Terry J. So I just want to say thank you to those organizations for having us and taking the time to listen to what's happening in our community and allowing us to get the word out as much as possible about everything that's going on. Couple more things to touch on. This week, we had two officers graduate from the Rutland Police Academy, Officer Olson and Officer Falco, who will join our team. They still have field training to go through, but they both graduated from the academy this week. The, actually, I think that's it. And rather than bore you with these other details that are not necessary, I'll see if there's any questions.
Alderwoman Davis.
I have one question, Mike, it has nothing to do with what you just said, but I was thinking about it earlier. When you talked about the police, it kind of popped in my head.
Yeah.
So the union negotiations for police were supposed to start in January. Are we moving ahead, or have we made any progress?
It's a great question. So our police union is switching from the NEPBA to the Fraternal Order of Police. We're waiting for that process to complete, and then we'll begin negotiations with their new police union. So that's in process at the moment. I think we're almost done.
I believe the vote to switch has been made. They're finalizing the transition, so we should be hearing from them soon.
Can I ask a question? Do we know why the transition? Was there a catalyst that's driving this, something different, or?
I am not entirely certain of the union membership's reasons for wanting to transition, but.
I'm just curious, yeah. As to that.
Yeah, I'm not, we're not, absolutely, I can't give you, you know, just only hearsay, but essentially, they were looking for a new opportunity to work with a different, so that's kind of where we're at.
And you'll let us know when you do start?
Yeah, so it should be, like I said, once everything's finalized, it should be within the next few weeks. We also, within the next few weeks, sorry. And then, just on that note, the DPW union negotiations, this Thursday, we're having our first, our kickoff meeting, so.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Very good. Thank you.
Very much.
Moving on to additions and deletions to the agenda, I'd like to move the special event permit to the top of the agenda if we can, and then.
I'd also like to add Ed Boe from the double RA is gracious enough to give us an update in executive session on the TIF district, so I would like to add that to the agenda, please.
All right. So we have a motion to add an executive session in which Ed Boe from the Rutland Redevelopment Authority can give the board an update on the status of the TIF district or potential for a TIF district in Rutland. That's been seconded. Any discussion on adding that to the agenda? Excuse me. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Great. We'll move on to the special event permit request for the Boys and Girls Club Summer Kickoff Event to be held on June 14th. A copy of the request can be found on pages 15 to 16 of your packet.
Is there a representative of the Boys and Girls Club here tonight to speak on this?
I do not see one.
Understood. Thank you.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move for the approval of the Boys and Girls Club Summer Kickoff Event to be held on June 14th.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion to approve the special event permit, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Alderwoman McClure.
I would just like to make a request that a representative from the Boys and Girls Club gets back in touch with us after approving this permit. I have no qualms about approving it regarding garbage and trash on-site. I know this is something that was very recently in the Environmental Sustainability Committee, and I'm aware their chair is not here today, but it's, even though it's not in downtown, it's still really important to make sure that we are looking into waste mitigation and making sure things stay clean after events. So that is just my request, if we can pass that along to the applicants.
Very good. I'm sure the clerk's office can do that. Any additional discussion or debate? All those in favor of approving the special event permit request?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have chief, we'll move to reports and letters from department heads and officials, and we have Chief Lovett with a request related to the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant Award.
Hopefully you can hear me okay. At the beginning of May, we put an RFP out requesting a, people to submit plans for a mitigation, hazard mitigation analysis. Remember, this is the, the door that would so, open up to allow us to get some grants for different things in the area that we don't have any documentation on. So this is the groundwork that will help us gain further grants in the future. And so we had five companies that were recommended by the state. They all responded to us, and this morning, we opened them up. Mayor and I looked at them, and I have one that came to the top. It's the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. They hit all the marks. They're very familiar with the area, and so I would request that you authorize me to make contact with them and get the process started.
Alderwoman McCann?
Second.
All right. We have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alderwoman McCann?
I'll make a motion to, was it authorize the chief to select the RRA as the?
Regional Planning Commission.
RRP, sorry.
Yeah, as the selected proposal.
Second.
And that's for the Hazard Mitigation Plan?
Yes. Okay. So that's what I was trying, I was going to ask, is what specific land did they get in?
All right. So we have a motion to authorize the chief to select the Rutland Regional Planning Commission for development of the Hazard Mitigation Plan. It's been seconded. Discussion or debate? Alderman Heck.
Billy, are you just looking at utilizing the entity to do grant proposals or to seek out grant type of opportunities for this, this project? You're looking at this mitigation project? Is that what you're?
Well, what this does is it assesses the city as a whole for all the different types of vulnerability, and then flags them into categories. So as grants come out on the federal level, if it's something that we can apply, for instance, maybe a bridge situation, we already have the paperwork and the documentation, so we can jump on that and get the funding to help solve the bridge problem. If we don't actually get this groundwork done, we're not eligible to even look at these, so. And it covers PPW projects, it covers some of our flood mitigation issues, even some of the stormwater stuff could be in consideration. So it's going to be a kind of an open door situation where now we can access things once this plan is done.
Right? Any additional discussion? Alderman Gillum.
Part of this study, when we did the green-up day, we went down through the bike paths, and the East Creek still has a lot of material in there that could cause flooding in the future. Is that something that could be added into this to look at that? What we should do with all this debris that's still sitting in the river?
I know this whole plan is, what they refer to as an all-hazard situation. As far as specific areas like that, I'm not really sure.
Should it be something we look at?
Certainly can mention it to the mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Because I know it's a concern about the neighbors down there that we have another high watermark. All that debris just comes down with it, and that clogs the bridges up, and that's what causes the flooding, so. I think we need to keep our eye on that.
All right. So we have a motion to authorize the chief to select the Rutland Regional Planning Commission for the Hazard Mitigation Plan via the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant Award. It's been seconded. If there's no additional discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Next, we have Barbara Spalding from the Rutland Redevelopment Authority with a recommendation to approve a Business Incentive Assistance Program Forgivable Loan. There's a memo and a copy of the loan application on pages one to four of your packet.
Good evening. The DeSilvas are applying for a $10,000 buy-up forgivable loan to open a martial arts school and fitness center, DeSilva's Karate LLC, at 41 East Center Street in Rutland. The loan will be used toward build-out of the leased space to accommodate fitness instruction and for the purchase of necessary equipment. Expenses are expected to be approximately $30,000. The application meets the criteria of the buy-up by both hiring two new full-time positions as well as personal financial investment of $10,000 or more. The RRA board has reviewed the application and recommend that the alderman approve the request, and the DeSilvas are here this evening to answer any questions that you might have. I'll just ask them to come up to the podium.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Alyssa DeSilva.
Hi, I'm Will DeSilva, head instructor, but she's really the boss.
If there's any questions.
Alderman McCann?
Yeah. Thanks for coming in, for being here, and good luck in general, but what are you most excited about? Like, what's, what's kind of the, the most exciting thing about bringing this business here?
Bringing martial arts to the, the family community together. One of the things that I've always done, and I'm, my, my home is Sacramento, California, and the schools that I used to have back, back in, back in Sacramento, California, really focused on a family, giving us something that the entire family could do together. Mom, dad lining up there with kids and doing the class together and having those long-term memories, the long-term things to do together. I have a few other pet projects, like doing women's self-defense clinics, it's kind of a, always been a pet project for me that I've always done back home as well. I, I feel like it's something that I want to do for the community, so we're going to offer free women's self-defense clinics. In fact, we have one that we're trying to shoot for July, August, sorry, in August, and just something we're going to plan to do probably every other month to just help to give, give back to the community. So we're very excited to bring this and have something that, again, families can do together.
Alderman McClure.
I would just like to say, congratulations on making it this far in the process. I remember seeing your very first meeting with Barbara at Speakeasy Cafe when I went to go get my coffee that morning. So lovely to see you here again tonight. Could you just explain for the folks at home where exactly you're going to be located?
Sure. We're on the third floor of the Dana Center.
Awesome. Thank you.
Which is zone four?
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion to suspend the rules. It has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move for the approval of the buy-up loan for $10,000 forgivable to DeSilva's Karate LLC.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion to approve the $10,000 buy-up forgivable loan to DeSilva's Karate LLC. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Good luck.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Barbara's up again with another recommendation to approve a buy-up forgivable loan. There's a memo and a copy of this loan application on pages five to nine of your packet.
Michelle Pearson is applying for a $10,000 forgivable, buy-up forgivable loan and referral to Heritage Family Credit Union for a secured loan to expand Nolan's Auto Repair located at 154 Granger Street in Rutland. Nolan's Auto has been in business since 1986. The loan will be used to purchase equipment and computers in order to hire two new full-time positions to better meet the needs of the community. The application meets the criteria of the buy-up by hiring two new full-time positions. The RRA board has reviewed the application and recommend that the alderman approve this request, and Michelle is here this evening to answer any questions.
Welcome. Alderman McCann?
Just a question, I was trying to read through both the application and the RRA minutes. Is this a transfer of ownership?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. And then the follow-up question to that was, with this, are you expecting to sort of tap into new markets that may not have been served before by this business? And if you could, would you say a little bit about it?
First and ever advertising course. So I started a Facebook page, and I actually got a lot more in customers just by that.
Awesome.
So, and we've been just word of mouth for the last several years.
For those watching at home, where are you located?
154 Granger Street.
All right. Very good.
And it is in a proper zoned area for that business, just so people know that.
Good. So I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules? Good. Got that motion to suspend the rules? It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move for the approval of a $10,000 buy-up forgivable loan to Nolan's Auto Repair and refer to the Heritage Family Credit Union.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion to approve. It has been seconded. Any debate? Alderman McCann?
I remembered I had another question, or a question to bring up for the applicant. Can you talk about the space that you've got for vehicles who would be kind of coming with this new business? Do you have enough space to kind of account for all of that? Great.
Seeing no additional debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara.
Next is Assistant Engineer Gillen with a Green Mountain Power utility pole installation request. There's a memo and supporting documents on pages 10 to 13 of your packet.
Move to suspend the rules and take the matter up tonight.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Green Mountain Power, just looking to install a new utility pole, 217-door drive. We looked at it. No utility conflicts. So we'd recommend to approve.
Motion to approve the Green Mountain Power request to install a new utility pole near 217 and a half-door drive with the seven...
Standard conditions.
Conditions.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion to approve the request and it has been seconded. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, reports of standing committees. That should be none. Reports of representatives, none. Reports of select committees. We have Alderman Entadio's report from the Environmental Sustainability Committee meeting of May 28th. I believe Alderman McCann is going to read that report in her absence.
Yes, thank you. The Environmental Sustainability Committee met on Tuesday, May 28th. Two topics discussed were the light ordinance and event permit applications, adding an environmental plan to the application. Members present were Chair Entadio, Alderman Joe Barbigallo, and Alderman McCann. Others present: Mayor Dungus, President Talbot, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Heck, Ed Bove, Paul Clifford, and Lopee LaRoe. Meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss a possible light ordinance and adding language to special event permit applications about dealing with waste. The committee first considered the special event permit application. It is currently a four-page document with a series of questions, including contact information, purpose of event, number of people, price of admission, and questions such as what arrangements have been made for traffic control, emergency medical services, and emergency fire services. This item was referred to committee after members of the public complained about the trash that remained after various public events. There was discussion of what should be required of the applicant for an event permit. Ideas included composting and recycling in addition to a plan for the trash, suggesting alternative transportation options for people, such as encouraging biking, and telling vendors that they can't use certain throwaway serving supplies. Ultimately, it was decided to model existing language in the application and asked the applicant what their plan is generally to ensure they don't leave excess waste behind. Alderman McCann made a motion to add the following question to the special event permit application pending attorney review. What arrangements have been made to minimize trash and minimize environmental impact? The motion passed three to zero. And I'd like to change the process here a little bit. I've realized in rereading this that we actually missed a little bit of language that we intended to have in there. So we didn't include a question about how they would deal with what trash they did generate. If board members here tonight are comfortable with it, I would actually move to suspend the rules, adjust the language, and propose a slightly different question to be added. If we're not comfortable with that, what I would then propose is that we leave this in committee to make a slight adjustment in a future committee meeting and then bring it back to the board at that point.
So I would say it's advisable to leave it in committee because the clerk also pointed out to me that the form that the committee was referencing in that meeting is actually the old form that is being sundown, that applicants don't use anymore. The new form is via GovPilot and it actually includes a question about trash. So there may be a need for the committee to modify the existing question.
So then, would the process here be to move this, vote it down tonight, and leave it there, or to just kind of leave it as is and wait?
I think we could do that. We could vote it down and then the committee could meet again because you did say that the item would remain in committee.
Or send it back to committee.
You could take no action.
The motion has been made. So, all right. So then I move to approve it as that. All those in favor? Oh, there's no second, right?
Yes.
Second, just a second.
All opposed?
Aye.
No. Whatever. Sounds like the consensus is to vote it down. Thank you. Next, the committee discussed...
Motion to refer back to committee.
It remains in committee. We left it in committee.
So may I add one more thing to your task? Because I'm on the solid waste district. I'm the chair. It's very important that you put the contact person in the solid waste district for the community outreach. They will come in and help the applicant to do all the setup, containers, whatever education need to do, to set the process up so they would have the right disposal units at the event. That is a free service because we are a member of that district. So that should be in the permit process, that contact information.
Excellent point.
So would we need to make a motion to refer that specific request to be added, or do we just add that?
I don't believe so. I believe we can use the existing referral.
Sure.
To bring that up.
Thank you. So next, the committee discussed the light ordinance referral. Lopee LaRoe explained to the committee that the Dark Sky Initiative and limiting light pollution can promote astrotourism, is beneficial for wildlife, and would increase the happiness of many people impacted by light pollution. Cities such as Nashville, Tennessee, and certain cities in Massachusetts have adopted a Dark Sky Initiative. Mayor Dungus spoke about how Green Mountain Power has been working with the city and that all of the lights on Center Street are already Dark Skies approved. The mayor explained that he and GMP have been discussing motion sensor lights that would dim when people are not using them, but nothing has been decided yet. Alderwoman Davis expressed concern that people are asking for brighter lights for safety. Alderman Talbot suggested a document that could be modeled on the Complete Streets Guide that could assist the city in making informed decisions when new lights are installed. In the end, the light ordinance was left in committee for further discussion, being adjourned at 6:26 PM.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Board of Control Commissioners. We have nothing on the agenda. Board of Cannabis Commissioners. We have nothing on the agenda. That brings us to unfinished business. Any unfinished business? Seeing none. Do board members have any miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business? Alderman McCann?
Thank you. So in looking over the document, the rules and order of business of the Board of Aldermen of the Rutland, or the City of Rutland, in preparation for tomorrow's charter and ordinance meeting, looking specifically at the order of business, I was looking through a number of other items in there that could be corrected or updated. Some of them are typos. Some of them are just for consistency. I was thinking of suggesting that at tomorrow's meeting, but because it kind of goes beyond the one rule we had specifically suggested, I wanted to refer this to committee, not for tomorrow's meeting, but just for further consideration at a later meeting to maybe just clean it up, get some consistency in there, make sure a couple of references that it makes are still accurate, and generally clean it up. So motion to suggest kind of reconsideration of all of the language for consistency and grammatical correctness to charter and ordinance.
Are you referring to the Board of Aldermen's rules?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
So we have a motion to refer to the Charter and Ordinance Committee, review of the rules of the Board of Aldermen. It's been seconded. Any discussion on the referral?
I'll add that the intent with this is not to change any, anything else in terms of like how it works or what we're supposed to do or not do, but just kind of cleaning it up.
Very good. Seeing no further debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any additional miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business? Alderman Heck?
We have two quick items here. The first one was referred to Attorney LeChance in regards to an ordinance requirement for an ordinance change. Had it been properly documented, advertised in a paper, had to do with the zoning. This was about four to six weeks ago. I just haven't heard anything in response to that. I'm still curious to making sure that those ordinances are, have been followed the process the way it should be. And also, just a question, I guess, with GovPilot. I know it's one of the latest and greatest. Everything's going to be done online, kind of removing the human element. But if there's multiple applications out there and GovPilot's supposed to be the place you're supposed to be getting applications from, just in regards to the special events permit, if it wasn't, if it has been updated or scrubbed, whatever those documents are on GovPilot as far as that goes, I think it's a pretty big chore of the clerk's office to try and eliminate duplicate-type things that may not be up-to-date according to GovPilot. And on those changes, I mean, was it taken before the board, presented to the board in regards to that? Or how are those, who made the changes? How did they come about as far as that goes? So I'm a fan of online-type things a little bit, but I'm still a bigger fan of human element and seeing people face-to-face, getting that information the way it's supposed to be. So if we have issues or items out there with the potential of multiple type of things, I think what we're doing is maybe a small disservice to the applicant, making sure that they have the right information. If you can only get it from one place, that eliminates the so-called process of maybe coming up with a duplicate that may not be what the board is looking for as far as fully vetted in regards to requirements that they're looking at.
If I could speak to the special events permit, the clerk's office have informed me that the reason that the old form is still available online is to accommodate those who are not comfortable filling out the online form. It allows them to fill out the paper form and then the clerk's office enters that information into GovPilot because GovPilot makes it much easier to gather the necessary signatures from all the different department heads. And that when there comes to be a time when no one avails themselves of the paper form any longer, it can be removed from the website.
Okay. But not okay. So if the clerk's office is responsible for transferring that information, not to pick on anybody, then they should be transferring the proper information. Or if a question's not being filled out, then they should get back to the applicant and say there's still something...
I guess I'm confused about what information didn't get transferred. Can you clarify?
So you're stating that there was something in reference to the collection of waste or what was going to, you know, how people are going to clean up afterwards? Did you not say that that form through GovPilot had that question that was on it specifically where the original copy did not?
Alderman McCann?
Yeah, thanks. So President Talbot, you did mention that what we reviewed in the Environmental Sustainability Committee in terms of the questions was an older version. And I think we're trying to figure out where that older version came from. Was that something Alderman Entadio had incorrectly or was that what was pulled down from the website? So I think we can look into that.
What you reviewed in the committee was the legacy form, the form that has been used for the better part of the past decade as far as I know. What is currently used by the clerk's office is the GovPilot dot form. If someone, which is on the main page of the website, right? So you have to dig into the website to find the old form. But sometimes people use the old form and they manually enter the information into GovPilot to make it easier to gather signatures. To clarify, the question about waste removal is on the GovPilot form. It is not on the legacy paper form. I don't believe that the Board of Aldermen has to vote on adding a question to the form. We can, but take a vote and direct the clerk's office to add a question to the form, but it's not necessarily a requirement. I don't know the exact history of how that question was added to the form. Attorney LeChance?
And just to clarify that, any information that's not originally put on the paper form is requested from the applicants and makes its way in there. And anything that's left, omitted afterwards, the department heads always request a follow-up to make sure we get that information from the applicant before it ever goes before the board.
Well, I understand there's a signature criteria. So if department heads are signing off on it, they're okay with the information that's being presented. All I'm trying to do is make sure that the public, when they're requesting things, that there's not duplicate forms, so they're not making a so-called mistake and that things are just cleaned up a little bit. Technology's great.
Alderman Adams?
Yeah, I'm just not sure this is a relevant topic to be taken up by the Board of Aldermen. Is there a specific topic that, is there a specific goal in mind here? I mean, what are we talking about?
Yeah. So the specific goal is that if we're requiring individuals to do or fill out a form, that it's the form they're supposed to fill out. So it's, I just have a problem with multiple forms. And if someone requires something, something could get lost, you know, being out there. If ordinances aren't properly recorded downstairs and someone was to go in and look at a specific ordinance and they didn't go online, they wouldn't know.
I interrupted. We don't have a motion on the floor. We've gone on way too long about this without a motion on the floor. So if you'd like to put a motion on the floor and it can get seconded and then we can debate a referral or a formal motion. Do you have a motion you'd like to put on the floor?
Not at this time.
Very good. Alderman McCann?
In relation to that, I don't know if this is an official referral, but could we make a request that the mayor work with the clerk's office to ensure that the print form questions match whatever questions have already been approved and are included in GovPilot?
All right. So we have a motion? Is that a motion or just a general request?
General request.
Okay. And the mayor?
You got it.
Great. Alderman Gillen?
I just have one question on process on this permit that I've been through three permits myself with some organizations. There's a one step. We're not getting a follow-up when the meeting, the permit is coming to the meeting, the applicant does not know when that happens. So we're missing a step there. So I would like to have that improved if we could. And I believe that up to you, the mayor, to make that happen. So that's one little glitch we found as I'm going through the permit, that we're not being notified when the meeting is, when the permit's coming up to me. And that's why some people are not here.
That's smart.
Can I just, I just want to make sure I have these down correctly. So meeting notification, when the permit's going to be...
Come up to the board, yes.
And then for Henry and John, it's that the form, even the legacy paper form, whatever pay, if we're going to fill out a paper form, the paper form appropriately matched the online form, so there's no missing information. Okay?
One more thing, Mr. President?
Mm-hmm.
Make sure the applicant knows it was approved on such-and-such date.
Okay.
A follow-up there.
Okay. That is, I think all those things would be relatively...
I think those are all easy, I think, just yet.
Yeah, they're easy to fix and I'll make sure they get taken care of.
Thank you.
Alderman Heck?
Go back to the first question. I'm just looking for a timeline then from Attorney LeChance, when she could get the answer that I requested about the ordinance being, that criteria being followed, just to make sure it does not put the city at any kind of liability.
Attorney LeChance, do you have an update at this time?
We've looked into it. As far as we could tell, there was, it was properly warned. It was in the newspaper, according to the Herald. If you'd like, I can try to get the specific notice, but I don't know whether I'll be[1589.66]